I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Is there anybody who'd like to make any public comment at this time? Okay, then we're going to discuss the proposed Performing Arts Center, School Safety, Shop Expansion, and HVAC Improvement Project, and the corresponding bond through performance Contracting with Energy Efficient Investments. So, yes, let's discuss. So what we need to do today is come up with a total amount for the bond, and how we would like it to be structured as far as how many years, if we want to defer principal payments at all, and kind of come up with a plan for funding this project. So, I wanted to see, I have a spreadsheet that has some scenarios that we could look at, that are basically, you know, I talked with Tara at the Finance Committee meeting on Monday about how the bonds would work, and discussed some options and things there. So, why don't I see if, I'm gonna try and join the meeting, and then see if, would I be able to present my computer screen? If I do that?
I just enabled that, so you should be able to.
Okay, let me try and join the meeting. I have to mute myself. Alright. Alright, so let me see, so if I do present now, and...
I sound married today.
How's she doing?
Well, you know me, she got nervous, I was gonna give her a big hug, and she was like, "Jimmy?" I said, "No, no, I just wanted to let you know," because I had to see it. She's doing fine.
When she's gonna be back to work?
So it's supposed to be presenting this...
Oh, yeah, she's gonna be at the fair. I mean, not...
Okay, there it goes.
It's slowly getting there.
Yeah. Let's see if I can make it a little bigger.
She's not totally, the bones are not totally coming together, her shoulders.
Did she have surgery?
Let's see if I can...
Sounds like such a painful pain.
I think she's somewhere...
Maybe this won't work.
She's starting to go stir-crazy.
Yeah, yeah, she's not the type of person that's...
I said, "I know, Mary, you're gonna be about eight times a day."
Alright, I guess my wifi isn't...
That's good to hear that she's humble.
Let me share this with you, Parker, and...
Yeah, I saw that she had signed up for the fair, I was surprised. So she can drive?
And present it?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, her and Felicia set up the whole WRBSU table today, and it's like, "We got it." Felicia's there, you know?
So, one of the things I was gonna show in the spreadsheet is it has kind of our current bond payment, and what is happening with that. That's for our gym bond, and it has principal payments of $195,000 this year, and then it goes down to $190,000 for the last few years of the bond payment, with the last one in FY '29. And it has interest on the remaining balance over that time that decreases as the remaining balance decreases. So that's the current gym bond. So, I guess...
Present, Andrew.
What's that?
You're not able to present?
No, it wasn't working, so I sent the...
There it was.
Got it, alright.
So you're gonna have to make it a lot bigger, because it's small numbers, but, so on the left, you see FY '29 is where the gym bond finishes, and that first column, yeah, that column is the, the second column there is the gym bond payment total. And so it's $190,000 of principal each year, but then there's interest added on to that for that total amount. So our current year is FY '25, it's $220,000, and it decreases to $190,000. So that's what we're currently paying. And all the way on the right, there's the column which, not quite all the way, there's, yeah, the tax impact and cents shows how much that translates to an equalized tax rate. I calculated how much basically each cent of the tax rate translates to dollars in our budget. So for each, you know, right now in FY '25, every, let's see, which one's FY '25? Every, every one cent in the tax rates translates to $103,000 in our budget. That's equalized tax rate. If you go with the South Royalton tax rate, because of the CLA, it's $82,000, equals one cent on the South Royalton tax rate, and basically the same thing for Bethel, because our CLAs are pretty similar right now. So that's kind of something that's just a helpful rule of thumb for how to translate between dollar amounts and what the tax rate equivalent is. Because we don't, you know, don't have the numbers of the yield and the equalized pupils, which is kind of what we can use to calculate what those dollar figures are, I just kind of projected what the amount of each dollar would be for going forward to kind of get an equivalent tax rate for future years, and I just did that by increasing it by 2% annually, which is a pretty conservative increase, as you can see from, you know, previous years, it's gone up by a lot more than that in previous years. So, so that's what our current bond payments look like. So if we go to the Bond Scenarios tab, oh, this one's even smaller numbers, I should've made these bigger. So this is looking at, if you go to the top, so there's kind of different scenarios of how much we'd be looking at borrowing. The rate is based on the rate that Tara had gotten for the, once she'd done our preview for it a couple of weeks ago. And then we can adjust the term, or the, and the deferment is how many years we might want to delay paying down the principal. So the way that that would work is we could get the bond in, you know, starting in FY '20, like get the money in FY '25 in order to start paying bills, and then start doing payments in FY '26, but only pay interest for a certain number of years, and then start paying the principal kind of when we decide. So, like that third one shows a version of that where we're deferring it for four years. And the idea with that, when I put that scenario together, was that would make it so that the principal payments start when the gym principal payments stop. So in that scenario, if we did $3.8 million at that rate for 20 years, the payment winds up being the exact same amount that the principal payment for the gym bond is, and we'd be starting them, principal payments, as soon as the gym bond expired. So that, you know, we can play around with different scenarios with that if we want, here, to see what the different, like, amounts and terms and payments are. Now, clearly, the rate's gonna depend on what it actually is when we go to get those bonds, and also, the longer term, we do the term, the higher the rate. So it'll add some to the rate if we do a longer term than the 20 years. If you look at the Combined tab, well, I guess let's look at the project costs first. So this was the same information that we had from EEI about the estimated costs for the HECM. So, as a reminder, the PAC is $4,117,000, HVAC is $296,000, that's the ventilation for the library and the science rooms. The secured entrances was $642,000. Gym upgrades with acoustics and whatnot was $350,000. Stormwater abatement, $300,000. Workshop expansion, $385,000. Control upgrades was $35,000, and the fuel switch was $310,000. So the total was $6,436,000, with a 5% contingency, for $6,757,000 total for the project. If you go down a little bit, our current sources of money are, the building reserve, we currently have $2254,000 as our current balance. And we have $500,000 in pledged funds now, but our goal of increasing that to, you know, around a million or a million point two, and they're actively working on that and going to be putting together a pledge drive, so we, that number should be increased. But that's what we currently have for pledged. Performance Contract Day, I wanted to talk to Eric about this, or ask Eric about this a little bit. The savings that were listed on the presentation we did last time was $14,450 a year, so how does that work with the performance contracting, like?
So we have, we'll provide annual reports for you guys on updated, your guys billing stuff. So we provide the baseline where you guys are at now, and then essentially with the work that we do, we provide annual reports showing the energy savings.
Right, would we be able to borrow, like, on the other one we did, we paid for the project with a loan based on the performance contract?
Absolutely, yeah, there's absolutely an option at least. So the, I mean, really portions of this project, if you wanted to do like the HVAC, the controls or other portions, you would kind of just pick out what parts of the project, and then you could lease against that stuff. Typically, you're not leasing against a community building, like the performing arts center, but the HVAC, pretty much all those underlying items in there, you wouldn't have any, any issues given of this form.
Would the, like, if we did the fuel switch with that, would that amount of savings cover that item, or would it just cover a portion of it? I guess is the question.
It would cover a portion of it, essentially, yeah.
And...
So, but you can do, I mean, there's no reason why you can't do a mix. So you could say, "Oh, you know, this portion is gonna be the bond, this portion would essentially be the lease." The lease amount doesn't necessarily, the savings don't have to match how much the lease amount, it doesn't have to be a neutral amount.
Right.
And then you could use some capital funds. And then, really, it's just a conversation with the leasing company, they would go out to a few different banks, get, you know, competitive lease rates from you guys, which typically their interest rates are higher. Now, there is another aspect of, Vermont Bond Bank has a USDA low interest rate loan program that they've been talking about putting out for quite a while, and that's a 10-year note at like a 2% interest rate. And that's for energy efficiency projects. They are supposed to be finalizing that like this week, the actual term, I don't know if they can talk to them about that.
I'm hoping they present it on Friday.
They've been talking about it for five months, and a lot of it's been getting delayed, and, but we are told that they're at the finish line, so that is an option.
So that could do the HVAC controls and the fuel, probably? If the board wanted to consider that?
Absolutely. Yeah, they're willing to lend, I think they're maxing it, I think at like 3 million per customer, just because there's a lot of people in the state that they're anticipating they'll own this.
So could you just repeat? So that was like a 2% loan that...
On a 10-year.
On a 10-year...
Yeah, amortized for 10 years, yeah.
Okay. And, but we wouldn't need to bond? Would we be using the energy savings for it, or not?
So that, that would also be a lease. That would, the way that they've structured it right now through USDA, is that would be a lease that you then own it at the completion of the payments. So it'd be very similarly structured as the other one. The only thing is that, if you guys were to lease the other stuff through a bank, they're typically willing to give a longer term, usually up to like 15 or 20 years, depending on the equipment or how big the term is. So I know when we were looking at doing like the smaller lighting projects, the max term that they wanted to go is usually like seven years, just due to like the size of it. And then a lot of times for like boiler projects, they're looking at 15 years, and if it's a more comprehensive HVAC upgrade, they'd be willing to go up to usually 20 years. But that's if it's over $2 or $3 million that you'd need to lease.
Okay. So as far as, like, the advantage of doing that over the bond is it seems like we'd be able to get a lower rate, and like it would make the amount that's voted on less, but it's still borrowing kind of basically the same as the bond, except for...
Lower interest.
Lower interest.
Lower interest rate, shorter term, so...
Yeah. Well, that makes it even more complicated.
But if we...
I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, no, it's good, it's good.
But if we were thinking about having those two items part of the 2 million reserve fund anyways, where there's no loan involved, then...
Right, yeah, I mean, yeah. Okay, so I guess if we use the, I was, yeah, so I had that performance contracting thing as a lease, which was just, I wasn't exactly sure, I was just like, this is down a little bit further. Totalling up that amount times 20 years is like, that's the amount of money that you get out of it, but I understand that's not exactly how the lease works, so, but that's kind of included in the total there, so the remainder would be if we used all of the money, used all of, somehow, the savings to end the fundraising at that $500,000 amount, that's how much is left over from that, that. But, you know, if this was at the $1.2 million, then that brings it down to 3 million. We do want to leave some in the building reserve, you know, I do think, you know, we talked about leaving 500,000 in the building reserve?
Yeah.
I do wonder if we want to use a little bit more than that, you know, to try and, you know, I think we have been putting aside money into the building reserve, kind of saying that it, like, these projects would be coming up, so I think we could use some more.
I like having a cushion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just worry about projection of, you know, you, like, it may be harder and harder over time to have money to set aside, that's...
True, true.
So I assume some of the money that we've been setting aside was because we had tuition that we hadn't been planning?
Tuition and Asur funds.
And so, how about the, now that school has started, do we have a number for how many tuition we have?
Off the top of my head, right now, no.
Yeah, okay.
It's more than we budgeted for.
It is, that's, yeah, so I mean, we're gonna be building that fund back up.
And one way I think we need to sell this to the community, too, so, at your $4.7 million bonding, all-in, if it's a, if it's about, the highest is about 400, just over $400,000 a year, annual payment, I saw, that's four cents on the tax rate, okay? That's just one thing for you to think about, right? Every $100,000 is about a penny on the equalized tax rate. And, you know, certainly in regards to students, if, I mean, again, I do think one of the things we have to say to them is if four students, four more come here each year, and we're gaining at least four every year, right now, that four is almost a penny, right? Like, that's, that's almost a 30-year payment right there.
Yeah.
And over four years, it may pay for itself.
Yeah.
Then in four years, if you're gaining four kids every year, then you're getting really close to that, that those 16 students are gonna pay your bond payment. Are you following what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
And so I've talked to a few citizens in Bethel, and one that was a former board member, what's, Greg?
Oh, my neighbor.
Yeah. That, he's really trying to help educate folks around that, right? And so I do think one of the things we have to do, too, as we think about all this, is how we're gonna educate our community, that this is an investment to increase programming for the RUD students, but with that, hopefully attract more students in, so that it ends up being, hopefully, possibly, a pretty close to a cost-neutral thing. And it's not just benefiting the high school, it's gonna benefit all levels of your organization. So I do think that that's just one of the things we're gonna need to really try to help educate folks on, once you make the decision which way you want to go. Because the nice thing is, in your district, as far as, you know, $100,000's a penny, it's not like we're talking about a district where, you know, $30,000's a penny. Which smaller districts it is, it's just the way it works out.
I was looking, so the gym bond was $3.8 million, and that was when $30,000 was a penny, so the gym bond at the time was 10 cents.
Wow, that's a big difference.
And how many years ago was that?
2007.
That's another good data point for people, though, when, you know, to help educate folks that supported that project.
Yep. Yeah, the other data point would be, at one point, there was a vote on the gym plus an auditorium, and if we'd voted yes then, then we wouldn't...
Yeah.
Need an auditorium now, or it's not an auditorium, but practice space. Anyway, so with these figures in mind, I have the, if you go to the Combined tab, that looks at the current bond payments is in those middle columns, I to L, and the tax impact of those. And then the left columns would be, you know, we can change those figures to what we want them to be, but that's what a potential bond payment was. And I put in that $3.8 million with four-year deferment to have, it so that matches the gym bond principal payments, and they start immediately after the current bond expires. So you can see that the interest on it would be, you know, about 1.3 cents until that expires, and then once, I mean, until the principal payments kick in, and then it would be about 3 cents after that. And if you go to the right, then the combined one shows the N through, I don't know, Q, yeah, yeah. Those show what the combined amounts of that is, so it would be around, you know, around 3 cents until the gym bond expires, go up to 4 and 1/2 cents, and then decrease from Do those numbers read? Because the, that doesn't make sense, the math. Why is the combined total more than what's over here? I must have something wrong in my spreadsheet here. So that's total...
That's why I used tabs.
Oh, I see, the combined interest is looking at the prince, the total column instead of the interest column. Sorry, guys, give me a second. So this should be, well, I guess I could just drag that down, should fix it. No? Sorry. Got a problem here. This should be E instead of F.
So Nazzy, I was thinking more about your question, we can definitely have that data for you next month, sorry, next week, just estimates, but just to give the board a sense, we did not budget for additional middle school students coming in over what we've normally budgeted, and you did receive 80% of the Rochester Stockbridge sixth graders that went into seventh, which was a big deal.
Yeah.
There's, yeah, I think there's eight of them. On top of that, we started partnering with VTVLC at the middle school level now, to be the host school district for middle school. We were doing high school last year, and that has brought in an additional two students. So you, you're probably looking at at least 10 students at the middle school level alone that were not budgeted.
At about $20,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
99.
Wow, that's, that's pretty significant.
Alright, I fixed it. So that, the correct numbers would be that it would be, you know, a little bit more than 3 cents before the other bond expires, and then stay under 3 cents after it, so...
Nice.
Yeah, that looks better. And then, yeah, each, because, you know, as time goes on, your dollars per cent goes up, the, and the payments, the interest payments go down, like, it combines to make it so that by the end of the bond, the tax rate difference is, is a lot less. Of course, who knows what the funding formula will be then, and all that stuff, so this is just kind of taking current law and projecting it forward, but we can't really predict the future, so. So I guess, what do people, do people have thoughts at this point? On, what do you think, like, should we, does this seem like a reasonable plan? Do we want to play with, we could look for a longer bond, or a borrowing more or less?
I like this. I think you've done a great job of figuring all of that out.
Okay.
I like the one where it doesn't change at all, it just moves to the next bond, and then for taxpayers, it's easy to explain, nothing changes, it doesn't, you know what I mean? It's just the same, I think that's easy.
Right. Rodney, do you have any thoughts?
I'm kind of split on it, I guess, I'm just kind of thinking about it, but, yeah, it all makes sense, I mean, which, you know, which plan we go with.
So just to, you know, if we didn't defer the principal payments and had it overlap a bit, then it winds up increasing to 5.22 in, like a 5-cent change in FY '26, and then, you know, that decreases, once the, decreases back to that around 3-cent change, once the gym bond expires, so, but then we're done four years earlier. So, that's the, the trade-off there. I guess if people do think that that's a good idea, then, you know, looking at the kind of total funding sources, you know, if we do 3.8 for the bond, and if we're trying to leave 200,000, or 500,000 in the building reserve, that'd be using 1.7 million of it. So, let's see, 3, 8, 3, 0, 0, 0. Sorry. And we get somewhere around a million of fundraising, so let's see, those two forced together are, shoot, sorry, are 5,500,000. And then if we're able to get 1.2 million, then that brings us to the 6.7 million total. So that does put a lot of pressure on the fundraising to go from the 500,000 and finding additional fundraising sources, and if that doesn't happen, then we need to figure out what would happen at that point. You know, some of it we could do with performance contracting or leasing, but, yeah. One other question I had for Eric was, the interest payments, you know, start whenever we decide to start the bond. If we have 2 million in building reserve funds, like, when will we have to be paying out some of these, like...
Your first payment?
Yeah. Or like, when, when will we actually need to get the bond?
Our payments and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Typically, what happens is the Vermont Bond Bank goes out for two, they pool all these bonds, and they go out twice a year, so I think it can take upwards of four to five months for those payments, for those reserves to actually come in. We have design time that's gonna be taking place right after this bond vote passes, which is about three or four months, would actually coincide really well. A lot of times, depending on Vermont Bond Bank, sometimes a school might do like a short-term bridge program, but I mean, because you guys have $2 million in capital funds, I mean, there's no way that we're gonna spend that during the first four or five months, so you guys should be fine. I don't see why you would need to do a bridge loan. Essentially, you can just wait for those funding to come in, and as they do, you can pay the payment back, so that's...
Right, I mean, I guess like, the longer we, you know, we're earning interest on it whenever we kind of start the bond, so the more that we can kind of delay the start of the bond, the less the interest that we wind up generating in the meantime. So, you know, if we can get approved for the bond, but have it start in like, you know...
After we spend the $2 million.
Yeah, after we spend the $2 million, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm gonna certainly talk to them... Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm certainly talking about how that works, I don't really care where the funding, where our payment comes from, or what funding source it comes from.
Right.
And then for you guys, I think, if you guys were looking at supplementing some of that with a lease, that I don't think there's, there's nothing that says that, oh, you need to do that on December 1st when you wanna sign the contract with the main portion. Like, you could sit there and say, hey, we're gonna bond and build the performing arts center in 2025 into 2026. And then, you know, come back in 2025 and get a lease and complete the HVAC and hear the control upgrades. So then you're not paying interest on this stuff at all.
Right.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, essentially, you would go out for that stuff as you meet the funds.
But as far as like, once we get the approval from the voters, then we could, uh, there was the December pool or the May pool, but we could do the May pool probably. Cause we wouldn't need the funds until later.
Yeah, I would think that.
May pool funds usually, if approved, usually funds in August, is what bond bank said.
Oh, then you should be fine, yeah, there's no, with your capital reserves, yeah, I don't see, we're not gonna spend 30% of the project in the first three months of the job.
Okay. Did I visit long enough, you came up with a decision? Well, kind of.
I, I had a question, I was, when you were talking a minute ago about, um, the fundraising. So in those numbers that you were doing, that, that included that 1.2 million in fundraising?
Yeah, so on the project costs, um, like, if, if we take 3,800,000 for a bond. And we have 1,700 from the building reserve, that leaves 500,000. Then we're at 550,000, or 5,500,000 in total funds from those two sources.
Okay.
And the total project is 6,700,000, so that would leave 1.2 to get from fundraising and/or leases.
Yeah, it, it just seems like, kind of, like you were saying, pressure to, on people to fundraise, that seems like a lot of money.
It does seem like a lot of money, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think based on all the reachouts that's been going on, I would not wanna bank on more than 750 right now.
Okay.
That's probably me being conservative, I just, that would be my advice, and I'm saying bank on, we're still waiting to get from the COPS grant, too.
Yeah, that is.
Which, which is crickets right now, but I will have, I'll put a fueler out about that, we did apply for a COPS grant, which was a federal grant.
Provide some.
Which, which is gonna provide essentially 150,000 a year over four years to support the security upgrade. So that would be another fund of money that we might be able to tap into to do that work in the upcoming years. But I'm just thinking, we know we have 500,000 donors, we know we have two other donors that have certainly indicated they wanna donate. I don't, I, I expect those to be pretty significant donations. So I'm not, I'm not banking on like smaller donations, right? When I said 750, I think, I feel optimistic at this point that through three large donations, that we would hit the 750 mark.
Okay.
And then everything else just goes toward it, but you know what I mean, like, I just, yeah, it's hard, it's hard to get.
That sounds better.
Hundreds of thousands, right, with hundred dollar donations or.
Yeah, it does seem like, I, I liked, um, you know, Chris had the idea at some point of, like, you know, we kind of provide the base. And then you can fundraise for kind of.
Upgrades.
The, the upgrades, like, so we have the gym upgrades portion of it, which is 350,000. So if like, we basically commit to doing everything, but save those for kind of the fundraising. You know, either small donations or some of the large donations, but, so if we, if we say we're getting 750 from, um, you know, those large donations, that would leave.
500,000?
500,000. Which, you know, some of that, we could, we would have the $500,000 of building reserves. So like, we could absorb some of that with the building reserve, do some of that from the smaller donor fundraising, and maybe some from performance contracting with the lease improvements.
Well, especially if we think the USDA lease is coming through.
Yeah, I'm hoping, they're gonna be at our meeting on Friday, and they provide updates. So I'm hoping, because it has been talked about almost every month, that they will provide some form of update. So I could report out Tuesday night if they do provide an update, cause Michael comes there to a meeting on Friday.
Okay.
From Bond Bank.
So I guess the question now, since it seems like everybody's on board with basically 20-year term. And kind of doing, mimicking the school Jim Bond, but with this bond of 20-year term, 3.8 million. Well, I guess the question is, is 3.8 million enough for the bond, or do we need to, like, do you think we want to increase that to try and make sure that we're covering the full amount? Or does it seem like, if we do 3.8 million, we'll be able to come up with it from fundraising? Doing a little more from the building reserve if needed, or leasing?
I'd like to think we could come up with it and keep it at 3.8.
Yeah.
But I have no idea.
Yeah.
We were projecting some surplus from last year, too, that you guys could ask the voters to put into your capital fund.
Sounds like we used a, a lot of that for the.
We did use some, right, for some summer stuff.
So, yeah. Rodney, do you have thoughts at this point on 3.8 as the, as a number?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, yeah, if we're trying to estimate the donations a little too high there, um. I don't know, I think we'd have to borrow a little bit more than 3.8.
Okay. Um, what would you feel comfortable with? Rodney, do you have a number that you would feel more comfortable with?
No, I was just trying to calculate a little bit, but, uh. I, I don't know, I, I just, uh. I just wanna make, make sure we don't dip into our reserve fund too much, I guess, that's all.
Right. So, yeah, I guess we should talk a little bit, so the, we have kind of the 10-year or longer-term maintenance plan. And when we were looking at that, the main expense that we think would be coming up eventually would be window replacement, right? But other than that, we're in pretty good shape.
We're gonna be in really good shape.
Yeah. And did we have kind of an estimate on when the window replacement, we were thinking of that happening?
Well, the thought was, I mean, we're put, that we would put away money over the, like, essentially the next 10 years.
10 years.
Be close to covering.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm just thinking so.
If I remember right, I mean, the window replacement was like a million bucks.
Right. In today money.
Yeah, that's today. The price might go down in 10 years.
But in, in over 10 years, well, just from the 40,000 we put every year in our budget, that'll be 400,000. You know, presumably, we'll have some surplus funds, hopefully.
If we keep getting those tuition students.
Yep, hopefully, we'll be able to add to it from surplus funds as well. So, you know, if we keep 500,000 plus 400,000, like, we're already at a million, basically.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think I'd be comfortable with, if we, like, using, leaving 300,000 in the reserve fund if need be. And that would leave 300,000, and then we could do a lease for the, um, you know, basically do the fuel switch with a lease, and that would be the other 300,000. You know, hopefully, we don't, I, ideally, we don't need to do the lease, and then we could just use the savings to help lower our tax rate. Not that, you know, it's not that much, but, um, but that would be a way of paying for, you know, still leave 300,000 in the reserve fund. Be able to pay for it if we didn't get anything more than the 750,000.
And you haven't figured in any of the other money that Tara's talking about either.
Right, if we got, if we got 150,000 in grants, that would definitely help, too.
Yeah, and that's, and this is based on contingencies, I mean, the hope is, is we, as we bid this out and stuff, my hope is that this whole thing may end up being less. I mean, that would be my hope, right? And then we're not having to dip in as much.
Right, yeah, I mean, if it comes in.
Me, my experience with EEI in general is that they've been good on their numbers, and they have not always hit the high end.
So, yeah, if it comes in without that 5% contingency, then, like, we're basically there without dipping into the reserves.
And a 4 million bond gives you an additional 10,000 in principal.
Right. So, yeah, if we.
Which isn't much.
Yeah.
Yep, so that would make the payment 200,000 dollars.
And then interest, that rate was 4.44.
If we did 3,900,000, that would be 195,000 dollar payment, which is what the lease payment has been, is, is this upcoming year, and has been for the last 10. So it drops down to 190,000 for the last four years, but it has been 195. So it'd still be kind of equivalent.
And we can also refinance bonds after 10 years, if interest rates go back down.
Right. Is it, is it 10 years? Cause it looked like the Jim Bond was.
Either eight to 10 years you can.
Like, when I was looking at, at this on the Bond Bank website, it had it starting at 2012, when it was voted in 2007, so 100,000.
Yeah, so they, usually between eight and 10 years, if rates have gone down, we potentially refinance them. From the Bond Bank, that's what they've said. Absolutely, rates go, we only do that one. Being optimistic about our future.
I guess where do, where do people wanna go from here?
You want a motion?
We don't need a motion tonight.
No.
We really just need direction to drop your resolution and your warning, and then you'll take action next meeting.
I'm glad you get final debt service schedules from the Bond Bank, so I have real numbers to give you based on our plan on Tuesday night.
And then what you'll see is the resolution really speaks out to, here's all the different work you're doing. And then your warning will say you're gonna do this, this amount of project, but you're only bonding this amount of money. Is how the warning works it. So by next Tuesday, my goal would be, hopefully, so that you don't have to have a special meeting, it is that, but we do have some leeway, just so you know. Like, we're good time-wise, if for some reason, we didn't have it all finalized by our attorney, we got about a week or two to do a special meeting if needed. But that we would have, um, all set, your warning, you could see what your ballot language would look like, you'd see what the resolution looks like. And I've already met with both your town clerks, we've already identified the five posting locations. And then we have to post it three straight Thursdays in the paper. The one thing that we're gonna need to know is when we wanna hold, we should, we should decide this tonight, when we wanna hold the actual informational meeting. That has to happen, you know, within 10 days of the vote, cause that date needs to go on the warning. And certainly, we can hold more than that, right? But we, we need to identify in the warning when that one is.
Okay.
And the town clerks are good, they are set on the polling locations, they're set to co-mingle the votes. They're gonna, um, plan to actually count them the day after the election. And we, um, got approval from the secretary, uh, state's office that they have up to 24 hours to count them. And when I met with them, I didn't think that you guys would object allowing them to do it in the morning, cause they're gonna be counting for the presidential elections and stuff that day. And they, they were very relieved by that, so, I didn't think you guys would have a problem.
No. We'll be on the edge of our seats for 24 hours.
I know, I thought about that, too.
We can, we can deal.
Yeah.
Probably be paying it on the edge of our seats anyway.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yes, maybe, yes.
Regardless of the bond. Okay, uh, so I guess where, what direction do we wanna give? I think I would lean towards the 3.8 million dollars, 20-year term, four-year deferment. But if we wanna do 3.9 to kinda match what the current payment is, or if people are more comfortable with 4 million, we can look at that as well, or. Something else.
Personally, I like the 3.8 with the four-year deferment.
Okay.
Seems like the least impactful.
Me, too.
Peggy, thoughts?
I always hate paying extra interest.
Yeah.
Cause when we borrow for four years, that's how much money.
Oh, defer for four years?
If you defer four years, how much, how much total, how much has that added to our project?
Each year, it's 145,000 dollars of interest. Well, before we start paying off, like, so each year we add, it's 145,000.
So you're adding a chunk of change.
It's true.
I hate paying interest.
Yeah.
Trying to be fiscally responsible, sometimes it's better to just do it and get it over with.
But what was the difference, it was gonna be like a, almost a six cent?
All right, so if we're back to 3,8 million, um, yeah, and we're not doing any deferment. That would be 5.22 cents, so it's basically a three cent increase when we start doing principal payments. You know, with just interest, it's about a 1.34 cents, just the interest payment. But if we add in the principal, then it.
And, but that wasn't combined, right?
Right, so on, on the combined one, this is deferred, uh, this is not deferred. So, yeah, it basically adds about, um, adds about two cents more on the, the years that we're overlapping. Cause that's basically the difference between the 190,000 dollars and that payment or not. And, yeah, I mean, and we're done four years earlier.
And, you know, I suppose the advantage of that one is, then that year where it drops, we'd be able to, you know, say that, you know, we, we're dropping the tax rate. By three cents from what it was, or two cents, can't read it very well.
About two cents, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I did like how, how nice and smooth it was, though.
Yeah, that's, that's the idea I like, is that people will see that, you know, there's not gonna be, it's not gonna impact them.
Right. If you go to the current bonds tab, one thing that was kind of interesting is if, and look at the tax impact column. So this year, which was, or this budget cycle was FY25, so it's a 2.13 cents. But if we just go back, you know, a few more, it's up to like, you know, 5.46 when we first merged. Or, yeah, back when it was first passed, it was, you know, upwards of 10 cents.
Wow.
So if we look at it in the historical context. So, if we look at it in the historical context, going up to five, isn't that a big deal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I don't know, I still like keeping it below, you know, kind of even with what we currently are doing. So, Peggy, you're on, on no deferment, is your vote? Okay.
I mean, because that's over, what, half a million?
Yeah, it's about a half a million.
We're spending extra interest.
Yeah, I, I would, I would have to agree with Peggy on that. I, I don't care for deferring the payment. It's just spending a half a million dollars in interest defer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, one reason I would argue for deferring maybe one or two years is we do know that the upcoming budget cycles are, you know, this isn't the most opportune time for doing this. Not that there is ever, you know, times when the schools are flush with cash and, and, you know, everybody's happy to pay more. But it does seem like the, we are going to be facing some difficult, particularly next year is going to be a difficult budget year. And so, if we have it kind of the full amount hit in next year, that's going to be potentially a harder sell. Or, you know, it'll be more difficult than if it's, so I, you know, maybe we don't do the full four-year deferment, but what about deferring for one year? So that it starts in FY twenty-seven instead of FY twenty-eight, or FY twenty-six, which is next year, this budget cycle. So, if we did that, it would be three point four-two for next year, and then go to four, five point oh-four for the year after. And then we'd have a year of overlap, two years, three years of overlap, and then it would be dropping. Or defer for one or two years instead of four years. What do you think, guys think about that?
I'd be willing to compromise at one, but that's my limit.
I just want to see what two looks like. So, if we get to two, then we never go above a five-cent impact. Because I understand not wanting to pay interest, but, you know, there are times when it makes sense to pay interest.
I don't know, I hate spending, it's just, it's a lot of extra money to the project, and people are already hurting as it is.
Sure.
That's, that's my theory. My hired man calls me cheap all the time, so it's, boy.
Where, where do you guys think?
Oh, I, I, I'd compromise with maybe, maybe a year.
One year or two years?
I'd rather do two years. And that would be a real compromise, to go from four to, zero to four, two's halfway in between.
Okay. Rodney, what, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with deferring it like one year, maybe two.
Okay. Really?
I'd still like to defer four, but I would compromise it two. I feel like keeping it the same overall. In the big picture, taxes maybe will stay more of the same and make voters happier. That was my thinking.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think two is okay.
I'm still on that fence, but-
Yeah.
So, can we compromise at two, or?
I'm willing to lose.
Okay, do we, yes, compromise, not, not lose. I'm losing my beautiful, smooth, smooth graph there.
That's beautiful.
Okay, I won't go home and cry too much.
So, are we on a consensus now at three point eight for twenty years, deferring two years? Hopefully getting it in the May pool. And then we'll see where we're at with fundraising and what we need to do with the lease. If we need to do lease payments or what we get for grants, we'll kind of figure it out. But this is what we're asking for, for a bond.
And just so I'm, just so folks aren't surprised when you see the warning, just a reminder, it will say, Tara, correct me if I'm wrong, but based on our attorney, it'll say that we're doing a total project of this amount, we're only requesting to bond this amount.
So, I guess that's the other question, is what do we want to ask for, for the total amount? Do we ask for the six point seven million as the total amount, and we're only bonding three point eight? Or do we ask for just the Performing Arts Center of four point one, but we're bonding three point eight of that? I, I would be, you know, it seems to me that the total project is six point seven, five-seven. And if, if we don't get the bond, then we're kind of going back to the drawing board and figuring out what is gonna happen. So, you know, we will do some of these things, but a lot of it would, it's not like we're gonna do everything but the PAC. If the bond goes down, we would-
I think it helps you with your informational, to be able to speak to everything they're doing, not just the P. You know what I mean? I do like the idea of helping the voters see, like, this is not just about a performing arts center. You're going to get a performing arts center, but you're also gonna get school safety upgrades, you're gonna get improved air quality, you're gonna expand the shop. Like, I think being able to have folks see that it's more than just the performing arts center, I, I think for some voters, they're gonna say, wow. Like, for three point eight, that feels like a lot, I hope.
So, can we do that? Can we say that we're, we're asking three point eight, but this is what you're getting for it? But kind of not saying that where the rest of the money's coming from?
So, this was our attorney's response to that exact question.
Okay.
If the PAC is the whole project, then the answer is an easy yes. We would be presenting just the PAC project with the offsetting and funding, and then the total, what we are bonding. If the PAC is only one element of a larger project, but the school board wants only the PAC to be bond-funded, the ballot would need to reflect that limitation so that voters understand, or should understand, that a yes vote on the bond endorses the PAC and the bond funding for it, while a no vote does the opposite. It may be cleaner if the voters were asked separate questions. One, endorsing the project elements that are not bond-funded, and a second, seeking endorsement of the bond-funded PAC and authority to issue bonds in support of it.
Well, I mean, at this, like, what we were just talking about was treating it as, the whole thing as one project, and just doing, so the three point eight isn't necessarily for the PAC, it's for-
That was his feedback on it. So, I think when we present this to the attorney, we have to be very clear. Like, this is where all of it's coming from, so that he can word it exactly the way we need it to be worded in the resolution.
Yep.
Looking at it as a project in the whole, that whole six point seven is-
We want to show them all the ECMs.
Yeah.
So, I do think that that needs to be very clearly outlined in our resolution, which is your presentation saying, this is why we feel this is a necessity, and this is what we are supporting for a project.
Is the, so if we say six point seven million dollar total project, do we need to list, like, one of the things we need to do is come up with a better name for this thing, because-
Well, the, the warning's gonna literally say every ECM.
Yeah.
So, the resolution says, essentially the way I just wrote this, it's gonna say to do school safety. Like, the voters see that in the resolution that's posted.
Just, it's gonna be-
It, it's, it is long.
Yes.
Super long.
Yeah, no, the resolutions are long.
But-
Yeah, but I was wondering if we could do something along the lines of, like, do you approve the phase two of the building, uh, building?
The warning language is incredibly specific.
Which includes, and then list every single ECM. Like, could we give it an overall project name that we're referring to it everywhere? And then have it also list the ECMs as individual parts of the overall project?
The resolution is gonna list every individual part.
Right, well, that's what I mean, is like, I-
You can call it what you want, the, the state statute for how we warn bonds is like incredibly described.
Is it possible to include whatever we decide to call it elsewhere, also kind of in, before the list of things?
Like, it's just gonna say a capital improvement project, is what it's gonna say.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's a good name.
Yeah?
I mean, I think we can market it, however you want to market it.
You can, I mean, the bond question, it says, often a valid item for a bond will identify a project that is X million and seek authorization for bonding of Y million.
Okay, so we do have to have the six point seven million in there.
We're asking for bonding of three point eight million.
My fear is that some people are only going to see six point seven million and stop, and say, no.
Um, all right, well, we certainly have a lot of educational meetings to do, outreach to do.
Well, I was gonna suggest too, and it'll be on your agenda next week. I mean, I do think the way you did a flyer, the type of flyer we did to help correct folks on the budget that they voted, that type of flyer is the angle I think we should go.
Yeah, I mean, my general thought was that we need to make like eight of those flyers. Like, one for the overall project, one for just the Performing Arts Center, you know, like, each aspect of it. Have one come out every two weeks or something, talk about it. It's gonna be a lot of work, but, um, anyway. Are we, do we have consensus on the amount that we're asking to bond? I guess, let's start with, do we have consensus that we're gonna ask for, like, in the bond warning, say, the total project is, as the total project, so six point seven million is the total project? Rodney? Does that sound good?
Yeah, that, that, I think that'll work.
Okay, so total project is six point seven, three point eight as the bond, bond amount, is that, do we have consensus on that at this point?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Twenty-year term, I think we're consensus, two-year deferment. Everybody happy?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Tara, is there anything else you need from us as far as that aspect of it, the bond?
I will email Michael tonight and ask for an updated debt service schedule, and let him know we're shooting for May bond pool.
Okay. And, yeah, I mean-
Go to the attorney, we'll send you all the draft as soon as we get it. And then Andrew, if you have questions, what we did for Sharon is we just set up a brief meeting with the attorney, our board chair, Tara and I, just to review all that prior to that meeting.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. I do think, you know, if we can delay whenever the funding date of that bond is-
Yeah, I mean, you could even go to December bond pool, if we're gonna utilize capital reserve funds to pay the initial payments. So, we don't have to go to May bond pool.
Right.
We could go, a bond gets approved in November, project starts in April?
April, May, most likely.
So, May, first several months of funding comes from reserve, we go for December bond pool.
By May, we will have project costs in place, and I will have a, a payment schedule in your guys' hands. So that at that point, you guys can really kind of determine. A lot of times, what I've seen other schools do is if it's a long period of time, and like, see, my payments are coming, some of it until twenty twenty-six, they'll take those bond funds, and they'll put it in an interest-bearing CD or something like that, which had been paying really good rates of return for quite a while.
Right.
They're not as good as they were, but some people are making a lot of money off of bonds and bank accounts.
Yeah. No, I, I'm more thinking for the informational meetings coming up. Like, if the projections that I just had in this spreadsheet had the first year, basically, we get fun, you know, the, the interest starts accruing in, in June. Whereas if we could push that back to November, or whenever, you know, we can have the, the later we can start the interest, the lower that first amount of interest is in FY twenty-six, you know, so, like-
Yeah, I mean, I would just verify that with Mike and make sure that there's no period of how long you have to wait in between it and stuff. But for us, like I said, I can certainly provide you guys with a projected cost payment schedule through the duration.
Right, yeah, so that would be helpful if we could get that kind of before we start.
You want that soon?
Yes.
Yep.
Because that would let us kind of like, say, you know, try and decrease that first interest as much as we can.
I can have something freebie at the end of next week.
So, just again, from Bond Bank, August bond pool, or, May bond pool gets funded in August, December bond pool gets funded on or around March first.
Okay, so I guess the question is, will we have enough funds to make it to March, or would we need it by August?
Or-
That's a question for you.
And that would be a question.
We draw down in August.
Yeah, we can, we can have that conversation.
Now we have an investment policy, I can invest.
That's true. Hopefully, up more than three point seventy-two percent, or whatever it winds up being.
I'll let you know tomorrow, I'm going to have to look at some interest rates.
And that's the other thing, is theoretically, interest rates are gonna go down further.
They're gonna be changing, hopefully, next week.
Okay, so that seems like Tara's got what she needs. I think we have consensus on what we're doing.
So, I'm going to share, just so you're aware, my next step. I'm going to share with our attorney each of those funding structures that we just talked about, so that he has all of that detail, as well as the Bond Bank, so they have all of that detail. So, where, why we're going from six, seven to the three, eight, just so you know. We share all of that, we give them the ECM, make DRECs, so they have all of that detail.
Okay.
To write this up?
Great. Okay, so now I guess we need to figure out when the, when we want to do our informational meeting, probably ten days, within ten days of the vote. You know, normally, if it was, you know, like, we usually do our annual meeting the day before town meeting. So, like, we could do the Monday before voting, but I, I don't know with, being a national election, if we wanna do it that. Close to the national vote, or?
Why don't we do it the week before, the Tuesday night before?
So, November fifth would be the bond vote. So, are you saying like the Monday before, the Tuesday before, or?
Yeah, the, the week before.
So, October twenty-ninth would be the Tuesday?
We were gonna have the SU board meeting. I think the SU board meeting's gonna get moved that night.
So, that night will be available?
It won't be.
Won't be. Okay. Yeah, I mean, what, like, do we think, just doing it the night before the actual vote, is that a bad idea?
Doesn't stop you from doing multiples prior.
We're gonna certainly have more before.
Okay, now the question, we have early voting-
I was just gonna ask the same thing.
Early voting for elections, do, is it, is the school election an early vote?
I talked to your town clerk, we're gonna warn this, they can request an absentee ballot, these are not getting mailed out to everybody.
So, it's November fifth if they vote?
Yeah.
So, they could request an absentee ballot. But this is why you're gonna need to do informational means prior. This is just the official one by statute.
Yeah.
That I need to have a date and time for the warning.
I mean, is there- I, I think maybe it does make sense to do this one like the week before then, and then like another two weeks before that, or something, or multiple, I don't know.
Should we do one here, and then one in Bethel?
Yeah, definitely. So, we've got a, a regular school board meeting September seventeenth. We've got a regular school board meeting October fifteenth. November fifteenth, so October fifteenth is three weeks before. So, we certainly could do, and where's our-
Certainly do a presentation then.
Yeah, where, where's our board meeting on the fifteenth? Do we know? Like, what's our next board meeting, next week?
We're here again next week.
So, it'll be in Bethel.
It'll be in Bethel. So, we did Bethel on the fifteenth. And then, we can't do the twenty-ninth, because that was SU meeting.
You said it had to be within ten days?
Yeah, so you, you're open that Monday, or you could do the thirtieth?
So, you wouldn't be able to do it on the fifteenth? So you wouldn't be able to do it on the fifteenth?
I don't know. You can do one on the fifteenth. You just need to pick one.
Oh, just one of them has to be?
To be on the morning.
Okay, just the one, okay.
Um, does anybody care twenty-eighth or thirtieth? I should actually look at my calendar.
Uh, doesn't make any difference to me.
This is the one I just have to have up.
Yes.
And it doesn't even mean you couldn't warn another one that week if you chose, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good too.
Does anybody care Monday versus Wednesday?
I prefer Wednesday, I have a standing meeting on Mondays.
Alright, let's, let's say Monday or Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Here?
Yes.
Here.
Cause we'll need that too.
Um, and we'll, so that's all we need for the actual warning.
Yeah.
What time?
Uh, I don't know.
Stick with our seven PMs?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think on the fifteenth, it'll be earlier than seven PM because we have our, this meeting at seven.
Oh, right, so six thirty? Is that enough time?
Um, yeah, for, for the fifteenth. Um, right now, we're talking about the thirtieth, though, or we're not.
Okay.
We don't have...
Right, cause we don't have to warn them.
Right. So on the thirtieth, do we wanna do seven, or do we wanna have something different? I don't care at that point, cause we're done with soccer, so.
Doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter. Stick with seven?
Sure. Seven o'clock, October thirty. And why don't, so I think at our next board meeting, like, at the September meeting, we can kind of plan out the rest of the rollout.
That's sorta, unless there's things to add, I had that as a big chunk of your discussion.
Right.
For next week, too. Just, I think the flesh out a calendar, most.
I think it should be, until, until the vote is done...
Me too.
It's gonna be a big chunk of our meeting.
What about, what about like at open house, like when there's a captive audience?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
And I mean, that's gonna be, how soon? I know we had an email on it.
Oh, twenty-sixth.
For, for here, and it's sooner than that, I think, at the elementary and the middle schools. But it'd be great if we could corral everybody into the gym at those open houses for even ten minutes, just to tell them that there's gonna be an information meeting.
Well, we have a concert at seven that night. I wonder, and our open house is at five-thirty, it's...
Oh, you've got a concert this soon?
Yeah, October second. So after open house, we go into the gym for the concert, so I don't know if you wanna...
Oh, yeah, we should take advantage every time, there's gonna be a, a large group of people.
Yeah.
Cause they're not gonna come to these informational meetings.
Alright, um, anything else we should discuss tonight, or, uh... Are we all set at this point? Okay, I think we have a sort of plan, and we'll make more of a plan on next week.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I believe we do. Well, no, we, we're gonna do public comment, cause there's another public comment.
Public comment, yes.
There, anybody, a public comment, want to make public comment? Okay, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Good, thanks, everybody.